Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the February 6th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Mayor Garpetian?
Here. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the February 6th, 2018, special public meeting of the city council is posted on Friday, February 2nd, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
One would be Director of Community Development regarding Downtown Glendale Association's calendar year 2017, annual report and calendar year 2018, budget for the Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District, one A motion to accept Downtown Glendale Association's report and budget.
Ms. McLean?
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Downtown Glendale Association is a nonprofit that manages the Downtown Community Benefit District, which is an area that spans two blocks of Maryland and eight blocks on Brand, generally between Colorado up to Sanchez. This year, DGA completed its fifth year as a property owner-based business improvement district. The DGA, in the capacity of the Central Business District Advisory Board, is required by local ordinance and the state to submit an annual budget that estimates the expenditures necessary to implement its annual work plan, which is why we're here today. In the annual report provided, you'll see that DGA has continued to work toward achieving its main goals, which is to improve the downtown, attract new customers, increase sales, and increase occupancies. The DGA is comprised of a board of directors that represents different property interests in the downtown. This includes President Rick Lemo of Crusoe, and Mr. Lemo is here, you'll be hearing from him, Vice President Joe Stiddick of Investment Property Services, and Mr. Stiddick's also in the audience today, Secretary Raul Porto of Porto's Bakery, Treasurer Helen McDonough of Massage Envy, Brent Gardner of GGP, and myself, representing the city. The executive director of DGA is Marco Lamandry of New City America, and Marco is here as well, and the operations director is Nick Lemo. I'd like to invite Mr. Lemo to discuss in more detail DGA's 2018 and 19 budget, and with that, Mr. Lemo?
Thank you, Jennifer. Good afternoon, councilmembers, mayor, staff.
Good afternoon.
I'm very proud to report to you that the Downtown Glendale Association is a shining example of how our downtowns are under reinvention. With the radical change in our downtowns, in particular, and retail in general, occurring throughout the country, we at the Downtown Glendale Association understand that Downtown Glendale must be more than just an accumulation of great restaurants, stores, retailers. We must become a place that people think of first when they want a desirable destination to visit. Therefore, we are taking the concepts pioneered through Santana Row in San Jose, Fennel Hall in Boston, The Grove in LA, and dual retail centers of the Americana and the Galleria, and building something that is more than just a traditional shopping area. Most successful destinations in the United States today are those that are walkable, that are attractive with intermittent public spaces, orderly, and are constantly changing in that they continue to attract new businesses and retailers. They're building a critical mass of retail, restaurants, and services, and are anchored with excellent cultural institutions, having easily accessible parking that is close to the shopping district. As an article recently printed in Entrepreneur Magazine stated, "The key three elements that make these destinations in the USA today work are identifying and building a special place, having independent financing, and having an entrepreneurial management corporation." The article listed Downtown Glendale as one of the locations that was a living example of the new change in our downtowns. In fact, that article stated, "Community benefit districts provide services from curb to property line, not just curb to curb," thus ensuring that a district's public rights-of-way are clean and making small-business fronts attractive for customers. One of the best examples of a turnaround district is the Downtown Glendale Association in Glendale, California. Its level of growth and strong attraction for businesses, as well as new residential development over the past five years, makes it one of the true success stories in Los Angeles County. The Downtown Glendale Association, after five years of work...
Are you still quoting, or is this your... These are comments?
That was a closed quote after Los Angeles County.
Okay.
Can you add that back on my time?
No, I'm sorry, I just... I mean, it was nice things, it was nice. I wanted to know if you were making that up, or that was the Entrepreneur Magazine?
No, that was what was in Entrepreneur Magazine.
Okay.
Here's the part that I'm...[312.12][312.12](laughter) "The Downtown Glendale Association, after five years of work, has achieved all of these things and stands out as a model to similar districts throughout our region and the United States. In regard to the place, Brand Boulevard has never been as vibrant and dynamic as it is today. Tens of thousands of people now talk about Downtown Glendale as the up-and-coming place to be. Whether it be Porto's Bakery, the Apple Store, or the Shake Shack, people know that they can get what they want and need in Downtown Glendale. We have meticulously built this name into something of real value at the expense of our property owners and not at the expense of the city." In regards to having an independent financial financing, the DGA is funded by almost $1 million in property assessments that, again, are independent of city budget. Though the city contributes as a property owner and has a presence on our board, it, the DGA, as an independent 501(c)(3) manages the public rights-of-way, the image and the issues of downtown based upon this independent funding. This independent funding allows us to play a strong role in supporting the arts, culture, and fund the public relations and social media that contribute to the development of Downtown Glendale. In regard to an entrepreneurial district management corporation, the DGA has contributed over a quarter million dollars in support to the Alex Theater since its inception.
Mr. Lemo, how much more time do you need?
Maybe a minute.
Okay.
Have worked to attract new businesses, office tenants, and restaurants, as well as retailers, to the downtown area. We've worked with the city on its growing tech week over the past two years, and are committed to helping city staff develop the Maryland Corridor Arts and Cultural District. We know that the sky is the limit in terms of innovation, and that it is key to our direction as a board of directors. Perhaps our biggest accomplishment over the past year has been to see the conversion of the Old Masonic Lodge, that iconic building that anchored the south end of downtown transformed into the regional headquarters of CBRE. Attracting this huge real estate talent to our district has made us ground central for everything having to do with the real estate development. In fact, as was announced last week, CBRE has recently purchased two large office complexes in and around Downtown Glendale, thereby solidifying their commitment to the area, and our plans for this year are just as aggressive. The board is going through the process of renewal and expansion. After five successful years of consolidating our image and resources in downtown, we are now reaching out to the offices, hotels, and property owners north of the 134, and I would like you to know that that was at their request. Our expansion investigation includes hundreds of new residential units and large office buildings on the north blocks of Central. We hope to have a new plan in place by this April that expands our current district, brings in hundreds of new residential units, hundreds of new hotel units, and sets the basis for new development along 134, on Brand, north of 134. In the interest of time, I would like to also just remind you that, in addition to being written up in different magazines and all, the Downtown Glendale Association has enjoyed an unbelievable image build as well, where our ambassadors have even been featured, and we just were recognized by the San Fernando Valley Business Journal for the second time in a row. And with that, I thank you for your time and my going over, and we'll answer any questions you may have, or we can answer questions after our slide presentation, whichever you prefer.
Okay, any questions from the speaker at this time? No, because I have two more cards. Do we want to do the slide presentation first, then go to the speakers, or...
How long is a slide presentation?
The slide presentation will actually be done by Marco Lamandry, the executive director of the DGA.
Okay.
So, I think we should, if we can turn it over to Marco, I'm sure he'll deliver this in four minutes, has been the time he promised.
Okay. Mr. Lamandry?
I'll hold my comments for later.
I'm Marco Lamandry, Executive Director, Downtown Glendale Association, and I promise to go through these very quickly. So, of course, this is a wonderfully beautiful place, and at the foot of the mountains, Brand Boulevard just seems like it goes off into eternity. These are just the overview, the 30,000-foot view of the district. You can see there's so much activity on the sidewalks, even people on their little 21st-century scooters, whatever those things are, going up and down Brand Boulevard with their dogs. Of course, going into this institution of Porto's Bakery, which is now spread all throughout the county of LA, founded here in Glendale on Brand Boulevard, what people experience at the Americana, all the new residential that's coming in, Americana in the evening, and the Galleria, these are all the elements that we look at in terms of the place. The independent financing, here's our budget for 2017, how much money we've spent, about $979,000, and you can see that the overwhelming majority of it goes towards district identity, as well as what we call sidewalk operations. The Alex Theater is part of our proposal for independent financing. We do what we can to support the Alex and have over the last few years. These are all the community groups that the DGA has given to over the last five years, and we continue to support all these different charities and community groups all throughout downtown, as long as they have an impact and they affect the businesses and property owners in downtown. Our social media, we're up to about 9,300 on Facebook, 1,300 Instagram, and 762 followers on Twitter. They're Entrepreneurial Management District Corporation, and you can see in the paper, there are some management corporations that have been in the news over the weekend that have had a little rough time. We consider ourselves to be doing things that we're supposed to be doing, like putting tables, chairs, and umbrellas for anybody to enjoy in the public rights-of-way issued by our ambassadors, cleaning up the sidewalks, passing out things on Valentine's Day, as well as being the face of the DGA, as well as impacting all the visitors into downtown, doing fall displays, scarecrows, pumpkins branded by the DGA, which so many people approve of and love, and they put their children on those hay bales and take pictures. Also in the medians, the toy soldiers, the decorations along Brand Boulevard to really give it a special feeling during the holiday season. Snowmen, which doesn't snow, it doesn't even rain in Southern California anymore, but we have snowmen that are within the medians, and the fiberglass spring flowers. We try to reflect all the changing of the seasons, and we do it through displays on the corners, which are things that we've really learned from our work all throughout the country. The Neon Museum, also with the spring flowers, spring flowers again, and then been working a lot with Jennifer on the whole Maryland corridor, this is something the council asked for two years ago, to do a lot more on Maryland. These are tables, chairs, and umbrellas that we've put out. People enjoy sitting out there, it's a great little microclimate, and it's now the foundation of the Arts District, and we think that as time goes on, it's going to become a real center of activity in the future. Some of the other things we've done is build these planters, and we raise funds in order to brand downtown Glendale, and as I'd mentioned before, we have new businesses. The CBRE Regional Headquarters has been a great influx. Maryland can get oversaturated with restaurants and bars, and to have office workers really creates a great balance, and we think that this has been, as you all know, decades what the condition of this building was, and it was transformed in the course of one year, and now there's hundreds of people that are going in and out of that building. And these are the new businesses that opened in 2017, working closely with Jennifer and the city to do what we can to attract a lot of new businesses. You have some Class A businesses that are coming here into Glendale, and it's really making this place into something that's significant, and it's seen regionally as the place to be. Thank you. Perfect timing.
Any questions from the speaker?
Okay, one more card, Lisa Glickman?
Mayor, would that be three minutes? For Lisa.
Hi, I'm Elisa Glickman, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. I'm here, obviously Marco and Rick mentioned how much support the DGA has given us over the last couple of years, but for me, the real key has been, as a former member of the Downtown Merchants Association, which did what we could on a shoestring budget provided by the former redevelopment agency, to now the extraordinary transformation into the Downtown Glendale Association with full-time staff, an ambassador program, and all of the investments that they're making into the community. I have seen a significant evolution in not just how our downtown is presented to the general public, when we're bringing in close to 100,000 people a year to this community, the first thing they see are smiley, happy ambassadors picking up garbage, making sure that the streets are beautified, seeing that the restaurants are sparkly and shiny, and it's really been an extraordinary transformation, as I said before. We could not do what we do at the Alex Theater, nor could we do what we do with the taste of Glendale or the Open Arts and Music Festival without the significant contribution of the DGA staff and their financial investment. So, it's been an extraordinary partnership for us, and I just wanted to share those thoughts on behalf of Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater, and publicly thank the DGA for all of their support and all of their willingness to take phone calls at 6:00 AM to address issues of garbage, or trash, or security issues, or anything that we need. Nick Lemo, who leads that charge on a local level, has been an extraordinary partner, as have the ambassadors. So, thank you so much, and I hope that you enjoyed their presentation as much as I have today.
Thank you. That was my last speaker's card. Any questions, comments?
Najarian?
Well, I'm very pleased with the way downtown looks, especially Brand Boulevard. Whenever I have a guest, it's not just take them to the Americana or to the Galleria anymore, which is the way it used to be 2008 to 2012, it's up-and-down brand, which has really turned into a great retail center for dining and bars. Some people go to bars and do that sort of thing. I don't, but it was our intention, when we did the downtown specific plan back in 2005, 2006, that we would create this type of environment. It's what we really envisioned. We were concerned when the Americana came in that it would be very insular, and that the patrons would only stay in the Americana, and they wouldn't venture anywhere further, but with the type of maintenance, and it's not just maintenance, but the Christmas tree lights, and the flowers, and the toy soldiers, clearly the draw initially, I think, for a visitor is to the Galleria or to the Americana, but they're welcomed as though now to go up Brand Boulevard, and to some extent, Maryland, we hope that that becomes invigorated as well. And it's really a great place. You know, it used to be, Brand Boulevard was not always like this. It was kind of a nasty place in the mid-'80s, a lot of garbage, the tenants were in and out, but I think the, and it's not all due to the Downtown Glendale Association, but I think the partnership of the DGA and the city staff, as well as the direction of the city council, has really made brand, and the downtown area, I won't limit it to brand, but the entire downtown area is something very special, and that's, I mean, in a city that we call the Jewel City, it's really something that I'm proud of. So, the, again, the cost of this is borne by the property owners, and it's not an insignificant cost, but I hope that they realize that it is bringing dividends to them in terms of greater patronage and just a greater sense of community. So, I'm very happy with everyone that's involved in it. You know, I don't want to pat you on the back, Lemo, you've got it enough, but Joe, and Marco, and everyone else has done a really great job. You okay, Lemo? You just don't step in it too many times, it'll be good. But no, it's very great, so I'm very happy that the DGA is going, and it's something perhaps that we look to when we, you know, when we think of other areas. I understand that there's a consideration to expand, I'm very excited about that. I hope that you can get to Central Avenue and get those large apartment building owners to kick in, because it's a little bit, you know, with the heavy use there now, it's getting to be a little rough, and I always say, gee, I wish there was one more street to the west, and make that part of Central look as great as Brand does. So, I'm very much in favor, and wish continued success to the DGA.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Any more comments? No?
I have one question, if I may.
Yes.
Mayor. What's the difference between the CBD and the DGA? And are there different boards for each one? Same board, same group? I don't know that I've ever heard Downtown Community Benefit.
The Community Benefit District is the vehicle that is used. The DGA is the nonprofit organization that manages our Community Benefit District. So, there's only one board.
One board, one board, okay. Well, all I can say is, you know, you've done a great job with the DGA. I think this list of contributions and the community groups that you're helping is a testament to your engagement in the community as a whole, and I commend you, and I've said this before, but, you know, I've heard that parents bring their kids down for those decorations to take pictures, because they don't have that at home, and those are just things that make the area just family-oriented and friendly, and of course, the ambassadors, you know, what would we, they're fantastic. So, thank you all for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Devine. I agree with my colleagues, I think downtown looks great, and because of the security that they brings with it as well, we have 21 new businesses within one year that opened up in downtown. I know a couple of more businesses that are not in this list, but nonetheless, it's a great indication of your hard work and professionalism of, especially the ambassadors, they're very, very helpful. With that, is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes, next item, please.
Two would be Community Director of Community Development regarding Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District Annual Work Plan, Budget for Calendar Year 2018, two-way motion to accept budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we'll go to Jackie Bartlow, Economic Development Coordinator.
Thank you.
Jackie?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council. I'm here to introduce the Montrose Shopping Park Association, which is the nonprofit organization that is responsible for managing the Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District. It's a district that is comprised of over 200 businesses, it's a tenant-based business. Their board is made up of six individuals. It's Andre Ordubejian, who's the president, Ken Grayson, Jeannie Bone, Kim Kelly, Gigi Garcia, and Christina Evans, and today we have Dale Dawson, who is the business administrator here to give a brief report on their work plan for 2018, and kind of an overview of the past year, 2017. And with that, I'll have Dale Dawson come up.
Mr. Dawson?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council staff, good to see you again. I see we're all wearing our Meet Me in Montrose lapel pins, and we had a very successful kickoff this morning. Thank you all for your participation, and we're looking forward to this campaign, which is really going to publicize the sweetness of our town up there in the foothills. I have presented to you, and you have before you our events plan, I want to just touch base on a couple of them, I won't take you through everything, because you did say brief report, so we're going to go with that. And just to let you know, we have Valentine's Day coming up very soon, and on Saturday, the 10th, we have our Charlie Chaplin impersonator coming to town to join us at our flower cart in front of Starbucks on the corner, and we will be giving out free long-stemmed roses to all of our clientele as they pass by. We've done this for a number of years now, and they absolutely love it, and it gives them a great memory of our town, and basically, it's just reaching out to tell our customers that we appreciate them. Our Spring Wine Walk will be coming up on March the 10th. We hope you will all join us for that, it's our second annual Spring Wine Walk. These have been most successful because they involve no street closures, and all of the activity takes place inside the stores, which the merchants love it as much as the clientele that buy their tickets. And on and through the calendar, you can see we have our many events throughout the year, but I just want to mention again, and my wife made sure to insist that I bring you a visual, if I can have this distributed to the city council members, Thursday night this week, we have our Merchant Appreciation Dinner, which we like to do annually, or perhaps semiannually if we can, and the idea behind it is to encourage additional involvement from our member businesses, to get them to really plug into the MSPA and become part of what we do and who we are. So, we're looking forward to a very successful evening, a champagne and candlelight tea at the Tea Room in the 2400 block. You are all invited, and Ms. Devine, Mr. Garpetian, if you can get back from Sacramento in time, we'd love to see you come and join us. Our budget this year, as you can see, is bordering right around a half a million dollars, which has grown over the years, and if you have any questions, I'm here to help.
Any questions from the speaker? Comments? No? Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Well, I'll make a comment. We all, I think, with the exception of me, commented on how good Downtown Glendale Brand Boulevard looks. I want to say Honolulu looks just as nice, and it's just as special. It's very different than downtown Glendale, and I think that's by design, that's by intention, that's what everyone wants, the shop owners, the neighborhood, the patrons, but overall, it's an amazing part of Glendale, and you're doing an amazing job of promoting it, making it better every day, and we're always here to support you in that effort, and I'll see you on Thursday night.
Thank you, good, and I just want to say we thank the city of Glendale for their involvement, and it has been a tremendous, wonderful partnership, and I also want to thank our board. Our board is the most active board I've worked with in 17 years, and one of our board members here tonight, Gigi Garcia, is our marketing maven, our chairman of our marketing committee, so the involvement at board level is higher than it's ever been, and that's really been a plus for all of us at the MSPA, for all of our businesses, so we thank them, and we thank you.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, the success of any organization, and nonprofit or profit, is the strength of the board, and so those were very wise words, and a good job by your board. Your activities, your events are always fantastic. I have to say that this morning I learned from Jeannie Bone that, and I was looking for Rick Lemo and the group, but they've already left, but she's formed a little restaurant consortium, coalition, so that all the restaurants can work together and collaborate, and I think that's really a step in the right direction for success, and also just getting along and being good neighbors, and that is sure to bring about more success to Montrose, and I know that, you know, I love to shop there, we all probably dine there, and we just encourage everybody that we can to make sure that they...
Meet Me?
What? Meet Me in Montrose. That's right, that's right, thank you, okay.
And just on behalf of my wife, one more time, Thursday night, we invite you all to come and feel the love.
That's right, okay.
I have a comment. I know the Wine Walk is very successful.
Yes.
Have you considered a pub crawl? Not that I do that sort of thing.
We have not, sir.
Because I noticed, actually, today, as I was going from one end of the district to the other, there, from the Elbow Room to Bien Toit, and the old Barou, and, you know, several others, that a lot of people that do go to bars maybe aren't familiar with the wide variety that you have in Montrose, and for whom a wine doesn't attract them, but maybe the thought of having a crafted beer, or, you know, a martini along the way might, not that I do that sort of thing.
Interesting idea. Well, to this point, the Montrose for Duda City Chamber has led the way in Brew Fest, and Oktoberfest, and those kinds of events, and we are seeking ways that we can tie in our member businesses as well into those kinds of things, in kind of in our member businesses as well into those kinds of things, in kind of in the terms that you're speaking of. So, we want to get more participation, too, in that arena. But no, pub crawl, probably not us. Wine walk, very much us, and our merchants absolutely love it. So, that's where we are today. Things change. We'll see.
They have the Beer Fest, right?
Yeah.
There's a Brew Fest in March? March or April?
It's in April.
Not that I go there.
April.
(laughing).
Well, you come to the wine walk.
We'll be there. I don't drink wine or beer, but we'll be there just to support the MSPA.
Terrific.
Thank you.
No comment.
Right.
Pardon me.
All right. Any more comments? Questions? No? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Sure moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Three would be director of community development regarding consideration to modify activities and not let levy assessments within the Adams Square Business Improvement District. Three A, resolution of intention to modify activities.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we're once again before you to ask you to modify the activities and allow us to suspend the district for the calendar 2018 for the Adams Square Business Improvement District, and we will have an actual public hearing on February 20th.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Motion?
I'll move the item.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Four would be director of community development regarding current status of downtown specific plan DSP and program EIR for a motion to note and file report.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm going to go to Phil Landsaf, who will take you through a number of PowerPoint slides. This was a question that had come up last year by Mr. Najarian, and council wanted to hear from us as it relates to the status of the downtown specific plan and the environmental impact report, and staff has done a review and has some information for you today. Phil?
Mr. Landsaf.
Mr. Mayor, that is a good introduction, so I will jump right into our slides. Just by way of background, in 2006, the City Council adopted the downtown specific plan and certified the environmental impact report. The district contains 220 acres, about the same area as the former redevelopment project area with some addition to the east. It is really an urban design-oriented plan. We looked at the envelope and what do we want to see within an envelope, and in doing so, created 12 districts that would eventually grow to that envelope. The plan itself sets the standards, the rules that we developed by, as well as the way we use the different land uses that are allowed in each district. When we did our environmental review for that, we did a program-level EIR in that we had several sets of assumptions as to what the build-out might be. We looked at different projects that we knew were in process, projects that we had heard about that would be coming on, and then we looked at what sites are likely to turn over in this 20-to-30-year span. So, in doing that, we came up with this district, and I hope you have it in your packet. If you don't, we've given you an individual there. This is the downtown area. As I said, it's generally speaking, the old redevelopment project area with the land to the east that comes out to Glendale Avenue added to that. In looking at our assumptions and looking at those properties we thought would turn over, those projects that were in the pipeline or said they were coming, we projected 3,980 residential units and 1.7 million square feet of what we call commercial office space. This would be really anything that isn't residential would fall into this, hotels, service buildings, office buildings, retail. I want to make the note and stress that that's not necessarily the capacity of our downtown, but it is what we studied as part of the environmental impact report. So, that we said, these are the assumptions, this is the build-out, these are the impacts for that, and the council then weighed that information as part of their deliberations for adopting the plan. So, it's not necessarily the capacity of development that we could have in our downtown, but it is what we studied as part of the EIR, and this will be a little more apparent as I get later on in the presentation. There have been several projects that have come through. These are the levels of environmental review that CEQA prescribes. Typically, you would do an initial study and determine what level of environmental review. Anywhere from an exemption, that is, you fit within something that CEQA already says won't create an impact, to a negative declaration, there are no impacts when you do that, mitigated negative declaration. There are impacts identified, but we could assign mitigation measures to reduce that to less than significant. A full environmental impact report, where there may be significant impacts identified that cannot be mitigated. And then, finally, a tool that CEQA provides is the addendum. The addendum process is where you study the project as part, you study the project at a project level, I'm sorry, and then you ensure that that development fits within with what you've already studied as part of the program EIR. These are the different levels of environmental review. As you look at the development that has happened in the downtown specific plan area, as I said, we have conducted project-level review on all of these projects. However, in using the analysis from that review, there have been several different types of environmental review conducted, and there's the list there. You see that of seven of 11 addendums that we did, seven were to the downtown specific plan. Four of them were to EIRs for project-level EIRs that were done as standalones, two negative declarations, three mitigated negdecks. We looked at two things as part of this study in turning it around, and we really did try and decide, what is the easiest way to get something back to you that will be meaningful without jumping into a lot of analysis, and if you'd like us to, we can go back and do that, but we wanted to take this first step. So, we looked at land use and then traffic, and that will come next. Terms of land use, from 2006 to 2016, there's 3,194 residential units that are either built or under construction or approved for development. There's about 100,000 net square feet of that commercial office. We use 2016 because that's a benchmark for us. That's when we did a lot of environmental study, including the DSP area, for the South Glendale Community Plan. That EIR is currently out on the street for review and comment by the public. Between 2000, if you added the projects that we think will come online or that are in the pipeline, I should say, those that have submitted applications, between 2016 and 18, when you add those units, it's about 4,000, just over 4,000 units, which is right just over the limit of what we studied. There's still a lot of area, only 200,000 net square feet of commercial office, which leaves 1.4 still to, that could be developed under what we studied prior. In terms of traffic, we compared the study, the intersections that we studied in the downtown specific plan and those that we studied as part of the South Glendale Community Plan. 23 of 28 intersections were included in both, and so, we really looked at those in level of service and the intersection capacity unit measure. 14 of those are very close to what they were, what we had projected. Eight of them actually improved, and they went up a level of service. One got worse. And this was, it's scientific, but it's not exact. What we tried to do, show you here, and there's discussion on all of them, but we tried to show you those intersections. In this column, what you have, very difficult to see there, you have it in your packet, but in this column here, we have AM and PM peak hours at full project build-out as part of the 2006 DSP EIR. What we have in this column to the right is what is actually happening at those intersections based on our South Glendale Community Plan study. What we tried to do is show you visually, in green, that's where it's improved. These yellow, while they have dropped a level of service from A to B, saying the PM peak, the intersection capacity is very small. We have here, this is Glendale at the 134, where it has gotten worse. It was a D in the afternoon, it's gone to E. It was a C in the morning, it has gone to E. Some of these, they're intersections at the freeway that we're relying on actual counts that took place. Caltrans may, Caltrans, the way they signal, could affect those because they may not have signaling on, in which case, our traffic is moving through very quickly, or they may have signaling which would cause ours to back up. So, we would want to drill down to those a little bit deeper, but this gives you an idea of, from a traffic. We chose those two because traffic is the impact that everybody feels right away, that they seem to know. It's a good indicator of those things that are a little more difficult to study, like air and noise. That would be a more technical study that would have taken some time and expense. Based on what we have presented to you and our analysis in looking just at traffic and land use, and again, those we think are the major indicators of how that plan is working, we've come up with several conclusions. One, that the downtown development is tracking with the DSP EIR. And when I say tracking, I don't necessarily mean timing. I think it's been pointed out several times from the council and staff, that development took place much faster than we thought it was going to. However, the impacts that we are seeing, they are tracking. So, the development we thought would happen and the impact that we thought would happen is tracking as we thought in 2006, based on what we found in 2016 and comparing those two, those two areas. The residential projects, any new project that comes on that is being proposed in the downtown would no longer be able to do an addendum as their environment, for their environmental review, to clear their environmental review. We would ask every new project that comes, do an initial study and project-level environmental review, determine what impacts are and what the appropriate environmental review document would be, whether it's anything from exemption through an EIR and anywhere in between. We think that there is still capacity to use that downtown specific plan EIR for more commercial, office building, retail projects that would be proposed. So, that is our presentation, what we found in response to your question, where is the downtown specific plan?
Okay. I have a couple of questions just to understand this traffic report or traffic study that was done. It says DSP with preferred project. What does that mean? The first two columns.
When we did... When we did the EIR for the downtown specific plan, we had a preferred project. That is, what are we going to study as the project that we want to build? And those were those development assumptions of 3,950 units and 1.7 million square feet.
Okay. And what does ICU and LOS stand for?
ICU is a unit of measurement, intersection capacity. It's a measurement. Then LOS is level of service, and they get a grade for those.
So, the grades that are next to it, A, C, A, E, B, what do they represent at this point? This is when we conducted the study in 2006?
In 2006, and then in 2016.
Okay. So, this just shows the changes between 2006 and 2016?
Correct.
So, if I go to item four, Colorado Street and Pacific Avenue, it was an E, and now it's a C?
That is correct.
So, it's gotten better?
It's gotten better.
Okay. Now, if I go to Wilson and...
I'm not sure it got better, it just didn't get as bad as the DSP predicted. So, the DSP EIR predicted it would be a D or an E, and it only became a C or a D.
I'm sorry. One more time, I could hardly hear you.
So, I apologize, I'm trying to call, but the way I'm reading this is that the EIR for the preferred project on the DSP predicted or estimated that these intersections would be rated at these different levels. And what this other one is saying is that some of, like the one you picked, number four, I don't know if it deteriorated or not because those numbers aren't here, but it is at a C and D as opposed to an E. So, it didn't get as bad as the DSP predicted that it would. So, that's how you have to compare it.
That's an important distinction because these are numbers that we assumed in writing our traffic models. This is what we projected, they're not actual numbers.
So, the numbers from 2006, .938 were decreased to .711? Let's say the item number four, .938, it was decreased to .711?
That is correct.
And if I go to, let's say, Wilson and Brand, how come we don't have that for 2016?
Wilson and Brand...
Item 14, for example.
Wilson and Brand were not studied in the South Glendale Community Plan EIR, so we don't have data for that. But if you look to the north and to the south, so Lexington is, I'm sorry, Lexington is studied at Brand on 18, and Broadway is studied at Brand at 10.
Okay. So, the numbers that you have from 2016 is from our South Glendale Community Plan.
That is correct.
Not for downtown specific plan. We didn't go back to downtown specific plan and that area and study that area only. This is from the study for downtown South Glendale Community Plan.
That is correct, but we studied the same intersections as part of a larger area.
Broadway and Glendale, item 11, went down from .62, .762 to .585.
I'm sorry, which one, sir?
Number 11.
Number 11. I'm just picking some of the random, random numbers. So, the increases were at Lexington and Glendale Avenue from .68 to .71. Only four areas, 1, 2, 3, 4 areas were kind of increased.
Really, wherever you see a yellow or red, that is where you've seen an increase in the capacity or level of service.
When you say in capacity, does it mean that the traffic count or the traffic load, the traffic, overall vehicle traffic went down, or the number of traffic got better? Or is it the number of cars were reduced?
Fortunately, we have several traffic experts, so I'm going to ask either Fred or Larry to explain the ICE. ICU, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Tate, Public Works Traffic. The intersection capacity utilization really is a score that just looks at the volume of traffic overall in the intersection compared to its theoretical capacity. So, for example, if you have a score of 1.00, your volume is, the volume of traffic through the intersection is exactly equal to what it can handle. And if it's at .9, it's 90 percent. If it's at .8, 80 percent, so on and so forth. And depending on the numerical value, it corresponds to a letter grade from A through F. And I think you're asking the question, did the volumes actually go down from one scenario to the other? And I think what Mr. Garcia was saying was, the DSP with preferred project scenario, the numbers in the left-hand side of the column, that represents traffic that was analyzed in 2006. in 2006 based on existing volumes plus the buildout of the downtown specific plan area, right? And so we're not really comparing existing counts in 2006 to existing counts in 2016.
I think that's what I'm more interested in to know overall, to...
Right. So basically, all that shows here for the intersection that you had selected, what was that for, between the projections and what the current analysis shows for the current model year, that things didn't degrade to the extent originally anticipated?
So let me ask you the same question for, same number, item four. If it's .938, if it was 1.00, basically we have enough cars for the capacity. So if it's .938, we are a little bit 90% of the capacity.
You're correct, 93.8, exactly. You got it, sir.
So if you go to the right column, it's 71% of the capacity on the green side, I mean on the 2016 conditions.
Correct.
So does that mean that the capacity went up in that intersection? Or does it mean the number of cars dropped? That's why the capacity is higher than the...
Right. And correct me if I'm wrong, there were no lane configuration changes from one study scenario to the other. And if there were no changes in lane configurations, there's no theoretical change in capacity. So basically, what this is saying is that the existing volumes at the intersection are lower than what the original projections were from back in 2006.
But that doesn't mean that the traffic did not increase?
No, it doesn't. Because what we're not looking at here, we're not comparing existing traffic in 2006. The 2006 data is combined with projections.
So what we anticipated, we did better than what we projected that it was going to be?
Correct. We outperformed the expectations, basically.
Mr. Mayor, though, in general, I would say the answer to your question is, could be both. You may have less cars going through there and increased capacity, or you may have had an improvement that increased the capacity. Or you may have both.
Right.
We didn't identify that in this...
Right. So in this case, we didn't have any improvements on that corner. So what this means, what we anticipated or calculated for, we did better than what we thought it would be, basically.
Yes.
The traffic may have increased, but it didn't increase as much as we thought it would increase.
That's correct.
Okay. Got it. Councilmember DeBai.
Okay. Well, we did have one improvement, right, on Monterey and Glendale Avenue. So this may not be as bad.
Actually, Monterey, yes.
134.
I think I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
It was worse in the study, and we have since had the improvement there that we don't know, but we anticipate that it is better than what is showing here.
Yeah, because I went through that intersection, I've gone through it a couple of times since the improvements have been made. And the line, the traffic can be from Monterey all the way back to Glen Oaks, and I think it took me two minutes to get to the freeway because it just moves very quickly with the two lanes. So it really has improved, unless, of course, somebody is in the intersection and they're not able to make the left turn and they're blocking all the lanes. But that's beside the point. But that has gotten better. So I just wanted to point that out. My question is, why are commercial and office projects still qualified for addendums when the residential projects do not?
So as we looked at the buildout, we said, here's our assumptions, and we're going to base all of our study on those assumptions. We've hit the assumption for residential. We have not hit for commercial. I suppose you could say there is an equivalent residential to that much commercial. But I don't think it would really be a fair apples-to-apples comparison. You have different traffic patterns for commercial than you do for residential. You have different noise. Everything is just different. So when you're looking at what you studied, you really do separate the two. And so we still have area in the commercial that has, that's been studied but hasn't been built. So it would qualify for an addendum to say, are there, if I'm looking at this commercial project, are there any new impacts that weren't studied in the commercial portion of the program DSP EIR?
So does this study, traffic study, contain the commercial?
It does. That's traffic for everything.
Okay. Then how do you know the difference between the residential and the commercial when you're looking at that for the addendum?
Yeah.
Traffic patterns, if you're an answer, I don't know.
We don't know, we don't know what impact, we don't know exactly what impact. That's why we do that project-level impact study for every new project. But we think in the downtown that these would stay as they are because you'd have different project features that would continue to apply here. Or these green that are significantly less will come up to what we expected.
Okay. I think the difference between the residential and commercial, my understanding is we calculated about 3,950 units, and 3,100 are already either built or they're in construction. But the commercial was 1.7 million and only 200,000 square feet is built. So that's the difference between the two. Okay?
So then in essence, this is either like out of date, invalid, and we need to just do, everyone has to do a new EIR?
For the residential...
Residential, right, yes.
It's not, I hesitate to use the words "out of date" or "stale" or "not valid." But we have reached the capacity of what we studied. SEQUA tells you, study something, see what the impacts are going to be. Technically, somebody that comes in with a residential project, it hasn't been studied by our downtown plan. So we want them to do that independently.
Okay. I have one card. Rubico Vanessian.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the Council's staff. My name is Rubico Vanessian with Cranbrook Realty Corp., PO Box 271, Glendale, California. I want to compliment the staff in doing a great staff report. Been wonderful to work with over the years, especially the planning department. And as far as the DSP zone that there was several times mentioned, that we've reached the multifamily capacity, I just want to give you a quick one-minute update on the multifamily sector. The multifamily sector is very critical to the downtown Glendale because the multifamily, these are clients with high disposable income. The businesses rely on the high disposable income of these folks that have moved into the complexes in the downtown Glendale. Average rental rates are $3. Some folks say, hey, it's literally higher than my mortgage payment. Yes, it is a lifestyle. I want to emphasize, it is a lifestyle. Some of these people do want to live in a large complex with full amenities rather than have a mortgage payment. Now, some people are still, there's rumors going on, some, a lot of them are vacant. Why did we do this? Average occupancy, over 90%. Several of them are at 94%. So whatever the prior body of governing body had envisioned, the staff at work, the task force, they've reached that maximum goal and the wonderful effects of it, that the businesses are doing great. So you have about 4,000 to 5,000 individuals that live in downtown Glendale that are paying over $3 a square foot rent because they choose to do so. They're enjoying the community and evenings, weekends, they're spending their money. A lot of times, the commercial component, the office sector, they come in, in the morning, they're gone. So you have Monday morning through Friday afternoon lunchtime, to Friday and Saturday, Sunday, literally restaurants were not doing well. So with this additional component of about 4,000, as Mr. Mayor mentioned, 3,000 are occupied, these folks are spending their money in downtown Glendale. And we need to also consider that although we've reached under the EIR capacity, we need to maybe pay attention. Our neighboring cities, Pasadena and Burbank, are aggressively pursuing their downtown mixed-use housing developments. As an example, the city of Burbank has about 2,000 units in various stages of proposals submitted, et cetera, in various parts, north and south. Burbank and Pasadena has about 3,000 units. Pasadena had built about 5,000 units in early to mid-2000, and they're achieving higher rental rates, 350, 375. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vanessian. That's my question. Higher rental rates, something we're striving towards or we're trying to avoid that?
I want to avoid it.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I think avoiding it is a good idea. Anyway. So, Councilmember DeJari.
Thank you. Thank you for the traffic information. And as you said, that there's many different components to an EIR, but perhaps traffic counts are the most easy to quantify and to put before us. There are other things in an EIR such as impact, okay, impact on police service.
Impact on police service, fire service. But let's look at traffic if we can. And I'm not a traffic engineer. But I drive, and I think a lot of us think because we drive that we are traffic engineers. Let's all look to item number 25, if you will, on that intersection chart. And 25, as you can tell, is Brand Boulevard and the 134 freeway on Sanchez Drive. Are we looking at that, everybody? And our current, let's forget what the projections were. The projections were computer models and traffic models. Forget what we thought it would be. But let's look at what our traffic engineer, and I hope the person that did this is not in the room. Fred, was it you? Because I'm going to speak, I'm going to speak frankly because that's what I'm elected to do, is to speak frankly. And it says that the recorded condition of that intersection during the peak PM hour is a level of B. Level of B. What is level of B? According to the Highway Capacity Manual, level B says reasonably free flow. Level of A speeds, and the level of A speed is the at or above the posted speed limit. So at or above the posted speed limit, with reasonably free flow, the speeds are maintained, but maneuverability is slightly restricted. The lowest average vehicle spacing is 16 car lengths. Motorists still have a high level of physical and psychological comfort. If there is any traffic engineer in the room who will certify that the intersection of Sanchez and the 134 freeway and Brand Boulevard and peak PM power is a level of B, please stand up.
Fred?
Because I'm just a driver, and I know that I've waited for several, every time that I'm at that intersection during peak PM power, peak PM hour, there are several, if not three to four different cycles of the traffic light which I need to go through. So let's, look, let's be serious, folks. I'm not going to buy that that intersection is a level of B. Is there any council member who thinks that that intersection is at a level of B? Let me repeat, in case you forgot what my description was, and this is a description used by the Highway Capacity Manual, reasonably free flow. Posted speed limits are maintained, and that's at least a 25 mile an hour speed limit, if not 35 there. Maneuverability within the traffic stream is only slightly restricted. The lowest average vehicle spacing is 16 car lengths. It is jammed bumper to bumper, and anyone that has eyesight that is 20, 40, or better knows that that is not the case. So my point is that any of these level of service representations carry no weight with me at all. But we're not here only about traffic. Traffic's a big part of our problem, I think. You know, I was around when we did the DSP, and we had certain, we had a vision. The DSP was a vision for downtown Glendale, and we envisioned a certain type of community with mobility and public safety and light and airiness. And I'm not seeing that with what we currently have in the DSP. And some say maybe it's because we had too many incentives that we put in. Throw in a little covered entranceway to your building, and that constitutes public open space, and we'll give you another foot or two. Throw in a little bit of art, and we'll let you have above-ground parking, podium-style parking. And I think that it is now time to stop this. And I'm officially on the record, asking that we place a discussion on the issue of a moratorium for residential projects in downtown Glendale in the DSP zone until such time as we can review the incentive standards and decide how we're going to incorporate inclusionary housing and how we're going to incorporate the range of environmental review on future projects. I think it's time that we act, we put this aside. We're threatened by developers who say they're going to come in and do what they damn well please, and the city council be damned? It is time to put a brake on this and not just pump the brakes, hit the brakes, till we all can decide what we envision for downtown Glendale, for what's left of it. It's 80% built out. We have to make sure that it's our duty to craft downtown Glendale in the image that we see, not what the planners see, not what the former, two former city managers before saw, not what the former planning director saw, but what we see for downtown Glendale. And if we believe that we should have more density, we'll go in that direction. But if we believe we should review what we have now, craft a better ordinance that will guide the future development of Glendale, especially in the critical areas, such as the gateway area of Glendale, where there are proposals for monstrous development, now is the time to hit the brakes, review it, and go forward as a council, as a community, and do the right thing. So my request is this be put on the agenda for a discussion at our next meeting. Does anyone support that?
For discussion, I will support.
For discussion. I mean, there's a lot of details to be worked out with the city attorney, how long is it going to be, what is the exact scope? We have to make certain findings, et cetera. But we need to discuss this.
I agree with discussion of this issue.
Okay. Councilmember DeJari.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, you know, I think having a discussion about this issue is very timely and well-advised because we've really reached a point where a 25-plan DSP development timeline has been contracted into an eight-year period. So the number of units that were envisioned that were to be realized in a 25-year period are now already there, we're almost there. And apparently, something's fundamentally wrong with the DSP because these developers are, now, we have a few developers who are saying, we don't care what the council's going to do, we're going to implement mega projects. I mean, if we don't have any discretion to deal with 700, 800-unit projects, something's wrong with the DSP. I agree. We have to review this. I don't want to take a sledgehammer to a problem that can be solved with a much more refined tool. So that's, I guess that's what the discussion is going to be for, is that we can look at the intricacies and the nuances and do what we jointly believe is good for downtown Glendale. Because again, even with respect to traffic, when we talk about traffic, surely there's more traffic today in Glendale than there was eight years ago, or 10, 12 years ago. But, you know, having traffic is also a sign of economic viability, it's a sign of health, it's a sign of jobs, a sign of residents. It's not all bad. Obviously, we don't want to get to a point where traffic becomes an impediment to the quality of life of our residents. So having said that, I'm, by all means, let's have that discussion, and let's have that discussion with an open mind and see what we can do to better plan the future of central Glendale.
And I said next week, and I'm not sure that that's, I mean...
Feasible, yeah.
With the, at the discretion of the city manager, the... With the, at the discretion of the city manager, the next available opportunity. Let me put it that way.
As staff, we're, we're trying to figure out what that timeline would be. But initially, our thought would be to bring back a report to see if there is interest by the city council to have a moratorium and if so, what we would be looking at as part of that. But legal has to look at, you know, there's the 45-day as it relates to the moratorium. And if you are going to push it into the one-year timeframe, there are some specific areas that we have to make sure we are within compliance legally to be able to do so. And we'll look at all of that as part of a report that we bring back so that you can make an informed decision.
So, to that extent, I'd like to request that any study or any analysis of the moratorium looks also as, to the types of construction that, I mean, does it have to be all-encompassing or can it be a moratorium on, for example-
New residential.
New residential apartments as opposed to ownership units? I mean, can we-
We'll, we'll look at that.
Please, yeah. Please look into that.
We'll put all that in there.
And Mike, this would have, this would have no impact on the South Glendale Community Plan, correct?
No, that's not thinking about it.
No, just in the DSP. Okay.
Okay. Any more comments? This item is a not in file.
So, I'll move the item.
Do we need a roll call?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ovigenian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinayan?
Yes.
Mayor Garbitian?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second. They are adjourned.